Stand for the pledge. Chris, would you mind moving us?
Sure. Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
This is to flag the United States of America and to the trouble of full acceptance, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as far off.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. All of you to work. Did the pledge? Now, cast a resolution to approve the
entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda, March twenty second, twenty twenty.
Favor. Want to boast?
Continue on. Continue on. Entertain a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty.
Hi. Post, yes, thank you. And so we will go right to the student body report. Regina, you were amazing. We thoroughly enjoyed it, thank you. We needed to laugh.
Yeah.
And we did, thank you.
It was a good one to laugh at. Which performance did you have?
Saturday night.
So you like me chucking the peanut, I'm running out of the tower ten?
You were great, you were all great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So our race drivers won their final competition this season today, about an hour and a half ago.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, um, the Patriots won their most recent competition last Thursday, and they'll move on to regionals. All of our Odyssey teams are competing in the state competition this weekend in Syracuse. Our original, we'll elaborate more on that. Cause you came up to me in the hallway this morning, you can't steal my thunder on this one. So, um, our do-gooders are fundraising to support Ukraine and our foreign exchange student Nick. Nick designed t-shirts that are now on sale, and we also have other ways to donate during the school day. Our spring sort of sports have started strong. We had some really nice weather, it was in the best we could have, so I think everybody's gotten outside, which is awesome. Josh Perez, Luke Kingston, Mariana Glankoff, and Rogan Henderson were recognized as L C double A exceptional senior basketball players and cheerleader last Friday at the exceptional senior game. Um, I'll be singing the national anthem for the section five, Ronald McDonald All-Star Game this weekend.
Wonderful.
Yeah. And then the musicals this past weekend, I think it went really well. From a performing standpoint, it was really nice to have a full crowd back, so it was good. And then our first high school wellness afternoon is this Friday. It's new, still been playing team, so I'm excited. Disney and that, yeah. Are there any questions? Um, there are posters with QR codes on them. So when you see a poster in the building, you've got the t-shirt designs on them, and then just scan QR code, it should open away.
Very cool. Thank you.
Wonderful.
We're gonna go sit and watch for paint.
Thank you. Regina, you're on.
So there isn't a whole lot, but middle and high school student council are currently planning a spring dance festival second. And middle school is also planning a spirit week, um, the week before April break with a pep rally on that Friday that week. And seventh grade will be starting a pizza fundraiser soon, and with the process and hope for looking for end of the year trip for students for sports. Um, spring sports will be starting March twenty eighth for the modified sports. And modified swimming had a meet earlier today here, and they're starting to wrap up this. So.
Meeting, the board. Thank you. Appreciate that very much. And I just need to start the presentation. Our guest was zero, Kerry Hoffman, from campus.
Hi, gentlemen. Hi, good evenings. Appreciate the opportunity, and how have you come to you? Um, we're going to present the value engineering report to you as this is regarding the auditorium. And Jason Cannon is with us, he's our director of public development. So we have spent time up with the staff and working with this, with Cindy and Aaron, and looking at the auditorium, determining E, kind of three ideas, ways to work within confines of the budget that we have, and explain where we planted on all that. Um, I think Jason has covered that. So Jason is going to do that, and I'll be here with him and answer the questions. And if you have any questions after we've done, feel free. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
All right, so first we'll just start off with the budget. Uh, the voter referendum was fifteen million, five hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we've now since the March ninth meeting awarded contracts to L G Evans, which leaves us with nine million, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars roughly, uh, for the remainder of the project scope, uh, to proceed with. Uh, I actually would like Charlie to maybe give a little update as to what L G Evans in those, uh, in that week and a half has actually gone to date. They're right, or they've been out there and ripping and grabbing.
Sure, so since our last meeting here, um, L G Evans has mobilized very quickly. I don't know if any of you have got the chance to drive around now back or go to the cafeteria, look outside, you can get a pretty good view from that point. We attached a picture, they've been moving quickly with the demo, most of the clearing is done, and we anticipate next week. Um, you know, and with as long as the weather keeps going, that we can start moving some dirt. So we're off to a great start. So far, it's all as well.
Thank you, guys. So it, to go along with the same format that we presented on March second, uh, we've developed a value engineering report, which I believe all of you have now. Um, and that goes into a lot of the detail in regards to some of the methodologies and explaining some of these specific items. Uh, these, uh, all these items in regards to the gymnasium and steam edition, we've already presented, we've already somewhat discussed. Um, we've filled in, uh, the, uh, second column there to really give you an understanding if all of those value engineering items are selected. Uh, it changes the, uh, that, that bid value that we had of the gymnasium to seven million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. So we're gonna go along basically that same format, uh, for the remainder of the project. Um, starting, and here's just a few, we, we included some of the renderings. This is actually a V E rendering, uh, that we discussed earlier with that, which, which takes out some of the windows, but fills it in with those metal panels. Um, it's almost as though, you know, from the first rendering to this one, it's not very, uh, it much different from an overall volume and scale. Uh, just a little bit of a layout, just to remind everyone about what the gym, uh, and steam edition looks like. Here's the ground floor here, and then the gym edition there. So getting into the remainder of the project, uh, we know the auditorium, uh, is a, is a big, uh, interest to everyone. Um, the auditorium is broken down into four specific spaces. And, uh, if we start here with the music rooms, which is the vocal and instrumental music rooms. Uh, we know, we, we met with the fine arts department, and we had a few discussions. We also brought in theatrical consultant to sit and hear some of the students' issues with the auditorium space from a lighting and sound perspective, um, to give us an idea of what we can do in terms of while saving dollars, but also, uh, remedying some of those deficiencies that, uh, are currently in the space. So starting with the music rooms, um, it's, the main priority of the fine arts department is to attack those music rooms, provide a better instructional space. Uh, so we, we pretty much, we can make the, we can maintain the design within these spaces without, uh, really, uh, without, uh, doing too much, uh, of the structural work that's really the biggest cost driving factor within the auditorium. Uh, so, uh, one value engineering item that we thought of was the existing windows above, uh, these spaces in both the vocal and the instrumental music rooms, um, could be value engineered out, retain those existing windows. They could always be done at a later date, uh, without impacting the overall finished space, uh, following this project if you, if you proceeded with this scope of work. Uh, that's about twenty-five thousand dollar savings. Uh, we would, uh, the next item is retain the existing H B A C system, air handling unit within that space serves both the instrumental music room and, uh, the vocal music room. Uh, the piping to that, uh, unit runs directly through the stage, up above the stage and into the back of house. Uh, so we thought, uh, if you could retain that system, maybe modify it a little bit to provide another priority that the band, uh, the band teachers had is one of the room, one of their offices doesn't have any heat whatsoever. So to provide modifications to the ductwork, uh, in regards to supply and return, so to get ventilation in there. And another item is, uh, some savings is to have a discussion with the E P C contract that's running alongside of the C I P project. Um, because we would be doing lighting anyway, uh, they might be able to provide those lights, perform the installation alongside the project, uh, which we wouldn't have to bid out to an electrical contractor, but you'd still maintain those energy savings from the current, uh, fixtures that you have within the, within the rooms. So just, uh, to highlight a few things, um, so here we have the, uh, vocal music and the instrumental. One of the biggest contentions is that tier stepping, uh, within the rooms. Uh, the, uh, department really wants to see that a completely flat space. So the design has us infilling, uh, these, these recessed areas to make a flat level, uh, space and moving the instructional, uh, wall, which is this wall currently, over to this wall. Um, that would provide them a little bit more additional area, uh, to perform or to add their instruction, uh, as well as it make some interior modifications, include a practice room here, modify these spaces till we have a different entry into the room over here. Um, and really, like I said, we can still maintain that original design intent, uh, without touching any of the other spaces and give them, you know, the design that they were already, uh, reviewed and were willing to move forward with. So this is just, uh, one of, these are, uh, existing toilet rooms at the bottom of the stairs, uh, to possibly give, modify those because they're not being used, they're mostly being used for storage right now, modify those to provide additional practice spaces, uh, for, uh, for the instruction. You know, and at any point, please stop me if you have any questions. Uh, so that's kind of our thought process around the vocal and music rooms, really retaining, because it was the number one priority of the department, maintaining those instructional spaces, uh, as they were designed to provide, uh, you know, a better, a better daily activity for the students. Uh, next we get into the catwalk rigging and theatrical lighting and sound. So this is really what I would say is all stage and audience facing, right? So that's everything that the audience and, uh, is being performed on the stage. Uh, uh, along with what we will discuss in the back of the house, uh, there was a lot of structural modifications that are being required above the stage, uh, to provide the designed theatrical rigging, lighting, uh, catwalk system, uh, to, uh, to the space as it was designed when it went out to bed. So our thought process is, and we met with, uh, the drama teacher, um, as well as, like I said, some of the students to figure out, well, what are you really, what are the real issues you're having with the systems? Um, and our theatrical consultant was able to put together a memorandum, which is in the back of the report, outlining some, uh, remedies to what their exist, the existing system and what we could do to make it safe and usable for, uh, the student body. So, uh, one value engineering item was basically to really delete that current theatrical sound, or theatrical lighting and sound design, as well as the catwalk and the structural modifications, uh, and the rigging and the draperies, really to condense this, uh, scope, uh, here down to, uh, improvements to the existing, uh, systems. Uh, those outlined to about one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the, uh, proposed scopes of work, like I said, remedy a lot of the lighting issues, uh, new lighting boards, uh, some L E D fixtures, as well as, uh, closed cabinetry, uh, for the lighting systems so that they can be left in place. They don't have to be moved, uh, by the student body, which, uh, takes a lot of time. Uh, and this is for sound and lighting, sorry, uh, sound and lighting, uh, so that, uh, the connections can stay maintained and doesn't, you don't get the crackle because, uh, of loose connections or anything like that. Also, any of the design that the theatrical consultant put together would be something that you could move forward with. If you did a larger project, it, those boards and things and lights come along with you, they have longevity, uh, built into them, so it's not wasted dollars that you would do now just to get rid of and, uh, you know, uh, when you did a different project down the road, if you chose to do that. So, uh, main savings, like I said, of one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, retains about, uh, five hundred, uh, thousand dollars, or four hundred thousand dollars within, uh, the space for those improvements. Okay? So this is, like I said, this is a meeting that we had with the fine arts department, really outlining their priorities, uh, within the space, and that's the instructional areas, the bandroom heat, uh, the scene shop general storage, uh, as well as the theatrical lighting concerns uh, within the area. And then this is a copy, uh, just a front cover of that memo that the theatrical consultant put together. So here's a little, little snapshot of, uh, some of those structural improvements. This is the lower, uh, structure to provide support to the, to the roof deck, uh, for this catwalk system to be installed. So all of this was going to be done above the existing stage, um, by hand, uh, in, by the contractors, which made it very complex and costly. Uh, so this is the structure that was going to be installed above the stage here, uh, to, on the, within the existing, uh, roof structures to, to stiffen them up so that we can support the catwalk, support the twelve-hundred-pound rigs, uh, rigging hoists for the draperies and the lighting. Uh, so this, that's one of the reasons why, uh, we identified as a value engineering to kind of reduce all that scope down. Uh, the aisle lighting, uh, and step modifications is, uh, more, like I said, that audience, uh, driven space. Um, the, the scope of work, uh, can easily be, uh, separated from the, any of the other areas. It could be done at a different time, uh, from, uh, capital outlay perspective, uh, or if funds are available at the end of the project, you could always bid it then and have it installed. It, it does not, it's somewhat separated, uh, from all the other scopes. So we identified, uh, basically not performing those scopes of work. Uh, and, uh, here is that lighting, uh, so it's aisle lighting here, uh, modifying those, uh, lights within the steps. And then also a step modification right here at the top portion of the lower auditorium, modifying the steps, uh, and cutting the carpet at the step areas back to, uh, the corridor doors. Uh, the next item is the back of stage, uh, scene shop construction. Uh, this is probably the most costly, uh, construction space, uh, within the entire project from a square footage perspective, cost per square foot. Um, even though it's not, you know, something that you, uh, see that much, uh, and I'll just, let me go to the next. This is all the foundation work that would happen behind the stage to make it feasible to build that second floor scene shop. Um, every single one of those, uh, orange squares is a pure footing, and every one of those red dots is a structural column that would need to be installed. We would basically be making Swiss cheese of the entire back of, uh, the stage, uh, and all having it to do, be done almost by hand. Uh, we had a, a small excavator might be able to fit down in, down the stairs into this back of area. And these red lines here identify where we have to, uh, excavate the existing foundation and perform underpinning at this joint, at this location where we're next to the instrumental music room, we're almost thirteen feet below, uh, the existing floor line, uh, to really install those struc, that structural support to develop, uh, the, uh, the back of, the backstage and, uh, scene shop construction. This is a structural improvements, uh, so all those red dots are corresponding to those columns, uh, from the previous drawing. And this is what is necessary to build that scene shop. Like I said, mostly being done by hand and hand rigging, uh, all the steel into place, which is making it extremely costly, uh, within here. Um, we also have, uh, the, and how the access works, uh, within the design is you have that lower level where the audience would egress out to these stairwells, go up, you would hit a landing, that's where the, uh, music rooms would land, would jump out and land, and then you would keep going upstairs until you hit the scene shop and then out the door, uh, just from a, you know, elevation perspective, just to give you an idea of what would be going on there. So I really just wanted to highlight how, how difficult that construction was, uh, and, and the reason why, uh, we identified it as a value engineering item to postpone all that construction just due to its cost and, uh, complexity. So we have nine hundred, uh, or one million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars identified there, uh, to postpone that work. But knowing that some of the storage solutions were a priority, uh, to the fine arts department and to, you know, the drama, uh, people, uh, to perform, uh, back there, uh, we included, you know, we want to identify that as an allowance to perform any, uh, storage solutions that, you know, identified a hundred thousand dollars for storage solutions, uh, whether that be additional, uh, brackets for, uh, those two storage rooms or maybe even a storage trolley for, um, the, the costumes and things of that nature, uh, within those spaces to just help maximize that space, uh, and provide better storage. Uh, and then, uh, another thing that we, you know, would think to do back there is, you know, perform cosmetic improvements. Uh, it's, uh, it's somewhat dark, uh, back there, maybe brighten up a little bit. Uh, make sure that the egress ability of the space is maintained for safety for the audience members to get out. Uh, if there is an event, you know, a fire within the lobby area, uh, outside the cafeteria and everything, you know, the egress for, for, for the audience is up those stairs and back of the stage. So we want, you know, brighten that space up a little bit, and then perform, uh, back of the stage lighting. You know, upgrade the lighting back there, maybe discuss that with the E P C as well, uh, so that, uh, you know, you're getting energy, uh, improvements with, with doing some of that lighting work back there. All right, that, um, and then we have, uh, the cafeteria, the lobby, and the toilet rooms. And these are all really interconnected, uh, because of the current design and how the curvature of the wall, uh, dives into, and I can kind of highlight this here, so this is the current design, uh, we have here. And so we'll be bringing a new wall all the way from back here, all the way around curving it in, and then expanding these toilet rooms. This also creates your senior high cafeteria here. So really, um, that lobby because of the, uh, curvature of the soffits, right? Everything kind of flowed together from a, to, to, as you walk through it, you saw, you know, basically your directional path to your new gym, uh, with all the soffits and the curvature of the wall. So, uh, S E I, or we provided one option, uh, to kind of reduce costs, but maintain that existing design of that full curvature and the senior high cafeteria. So we removed some of those fire rated windows, uh, that you see within the assembly here, 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 and here. Just as very costly glazing, it's rated for two hours, uh, so we wanted to, you know, we would reduce the, that glazing there. And then another one would be the fire rated storefront assembly, so this is a lot of glass. Uh, I, oh, that was the wrong one, right here, uh, to, you know, bring that back to standardized door, uh, system that we would see. And then, uh, one of the other items is you, uh, to reuse existing double entry doors. So obviously, you here, you have the existing doorways within your cafeteria. Um, they're not, uh, they're, they're not the worst doors that you have, uh, so there could be a savings there. Obviously, you know, if you, uh, really want to improve the cosmetics and everything and, and the functionality, uh, you would install new, but there is, uh, we did offer that as a, as a cost savings to reuse the existing double entry doors. Um, another one would be to go to is more standard ceiling system in lieu of that, with those, uh, soffits, uh, that I showed here, and move these soffits here, and then this is actually exposed up to the roof deck with acoustical panels that sit on, on the deck, um, with some, uh, lighting, uh, as well, with some lighting here, the circular lights. So one of our value engineering items is, you know, go to a standard drop-in acoustical ceiling, similar to what's actually there now, uh, but have the curvature of the, uh, cafeteria maintained. And in conjunction with that, we would do, uh, standard, uh, lighting fixtures as well. Right now, uh, we have LEDs that run within the soffit system all the way around here, all the way here, and all the way along here, as well as, uh, drop-down can fixtures, or pendant fixtures actually, from the roof deck that drop down into, uh, basically that's walkway here and here. So, uh, another one of our value engineering items was to modify the lighting to a standard drop-in fixture, uh, to provide some savings there. And then, like I said, reuse the system doors. So option A identifies about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in savings, uh, to that space, roughly ten percent. Um, S E I provided an additional thought process, and this is option B, uh, which, let me just show you kind of clear the idea here is you remain, uh, have the existing corridor walls remain here and here. We do not create that senior cafeteria, uh, option, and then just provide that curvature over to this one single door and still expand your toilet rooms here. Those toilet rooms, I think, I believe as they sit now, and Ted, you can obviously correct me, but I, I don't believe they're ADA accessible, uh, as they are now. So obviously, this expansion provides that ADA capability. I believe it adds, uh, one or two new fixtures, a better, uh, individual, uh, labs, uh, lavatories for washing hands and things of that nature instead of the, uh, single gang ones here. So, uh, the idea would be to maintain somewhat that scope of work within the toilet rooms, but only have the curvature of that wall really come to meet it. Uh, so that's, that's the option that S E I kind of came up with. Um, so we would remove the senior high cafeteria as a value engineering item, eighty thousand dollars. Uh, number two, maintain a portion of the existing cafeteria wall that has showed. Um, but then the other three items we, we provided is, you know, maintaining those as value engineering items, whether to modify the ceiling systems, uh, to a standard drop-in, uh, to modify the lighting and to reuse, uh, the existing doors. So those are the two different options. This obviously, uh, because we're not really performing, we're not touching a lot of the existing cafeteria wall, uh, and as well not performing the senior high cafeteria construction, uh, provides us almost twenty percent, uh, the value that we're currently holding for these scopes of work at two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Now we get into some of the other, uh, miscellaneous areas of the project that don't have, you know, there's three main areas that would, would I envision as three main areas, the gym, the cafeteria, and the auditorium. These get into some of those, uh, other areas of the building that were designed within the project, but they were bid as alternates. So they were never, uh, you know, part of the base bid scopes of work. Uh, so one is the fitness room. Uh, value engineering item here is, uh, we are building two single-use toilet facilities, uh, within the fitness room here. One main, one is accessible from the corridor side, one would be accessible from the actual fitness room. So one value engineering item would be to prove that construction, uh, roughly seventy-five thousand dollar savings. Uh, item two would be to retain the existing H B A C system. So there's an air handling unit that sits in here, we're ma, we're maintaining and leaving all the existing ductwork within this space. Uh, there are some, uh, maintenance items that need to be done, and that is taken into account with the savings that we're, we're showing. Uh, some actuators that aren't working and things of that nature, so we would still perform those scopes of work. Uh, but it would be, uh, to retain the existing system, and then it, as I said, or I didn't, I don't think I said that yet, but, uh, it could always be done at a later date. The, the unit, uh, based upon how we're connecting to the existing ductwork, uh, and, and identifying the return systems could always be, uh, replaced at a later date, does not need to happen in, in conjunction with any of the other renovations within here. Uh, the last item here for the fitness room is retain the existing ceiling system. Currently, uh, the ceiling, uh, is to come out, and then we would, uh, make sure all the, any loose items within the, above the acoustical ceilings are strapped down, and then it would be painted, and acoustical panels would be adhered to the, the ceiling deck, uh, of the space. Obviously, that provides some additional headroom, uh, within a fitness room, uh, which obviously is beneficial, but, uh, it would be a cost savings to just maintain a, a drop-in ceiling system for that area. That, that leaves us about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in possible value engineering items, uh, for the fitness room. Next space is the team rooms. Um, when we look at the team room construction here, uh, there's not much in terms of what you can value engineer out of it, right? It's either you move forward with, uh, this design layout, uh, because it creates the space, like we, if you, if we're gonna demo out all these masonry walls, you really, there's, there's not much I can, I can identify as cost savings. Uh, especially, we looked at some of the finishes, there are the standard finishes that you would want within a locker room for longevity and abuse resistance. There are tile, uh, wainscoting, it's painted siamy walls, it's tiled floors. It's really, you know, all the things that you would want if you were, uh, looking for longevity in a renovation. So we didn't really see any savings, uh, possible there. Uh, but we could retain the existing H B A C system and just modify the ductwork, uh, that supports it, uh, to, to create, uh, those, the to, to create those, those new teen rooms. Review, when I put in there is we would review the locker model that might have been chosen just to see if there might be a less costly model out there in lieu of maybe what was specified, possibly ten thousand dollar savings there. And then provide lighting, and we might even, you could even have this discussion with the EPC contract, even if you didn't perform any work. At least get the lighting upgraded to LEDs so you have some energy efficiency. So all in all, like I said, there's not much to value engineer out of that specific space, but we identified about four, forty-two thousand dollars there. Next area is the lower corridors. So as bid as an alternate is these lower corridors. They kind of surround the existing fitness room, the new space, this new exercise slash large group area that we'll be creating, as well as this back portion along these teen rooms and then along this main high school gym. We bid this as an alternate. It's for the replacement of the VCT floors as well as the ceiling systems. So those are two scopes of work that could be easily be separated. They don't need to be done in conjunction with each other. And they can always be done at a later date without impacts to the, to the interest of the rest of the project. So we identify the ceilings, the VCT, and then obviously, like I said, provide lighting possibly via the EPC just for that energy performance and savings. So roughly 200, you know, the entire scope of work there, 222,000. And then we get into some of the other spaces. The media center and IT office. This is basically just me in closing off the space, vestibule within the media center to, to make that office area. This could be performed, you know, a different funding stream, possibly a capital outlet project, you know, due to its, you know, cost and size. Then we get into the dust collectors and the enclosure and the elevator modernization. These do not lend themselves to value engineering. There's just not money you can pull out. It's you do these scopes of work or you don't. You know, you, you can't really modify anything within an elevator that you're trying to modernize and bring up to current standards. A dust collector is a dust collector. So we really, it's, it's either proceed with the scopes of work because they fit within the priorities of the district, you know, from a student access and a safety level, or, you know, leave them to be done at a later date. Chiller pump replacement. This is actually being carried under the EPC already. So that will be removed from the project scope already. Single use toilet rooms. Again, we are creating these single use toilet rooms outside of the auditorium right next to the district office. We're creating three of them out of one gang bathroom, one boys' gang bathroom. And really, there's not much to value engineer out of those just because that's what it's, what is necessary to be done is being done. The only thing we could really think of is you could paint the walls in lieu of putting a wall tile, but really that's a longevity and abuse, you know, item. It's, it's there for a reason. You're to have just drywall within a school toilet room. It's, it's going to get done, it's going to need repairs. So it's not something that we would necessarily suggest, but to provide a value engineering item to reduce some costs, we had that item. And then I believe last but not least is the high school gymnasium. The scope of work is really to take the mechanical space, turn it into a smaller mechanical slash storage space, provide a mezzanine to overlook the existing gymnasium and provide some additional bleachers. So our value engineering item for that is remove the additional bleachers scope of work. You could still have foot traffic up there to overview the existing gym, but, and you could purchase the bleachers at a later date. If the space is there, the bleachers could still be installed. So that was a value engineering item for about forty-five thousand dollars there. So any questions on value engineering?
I just called a lot.
Any questions? I just wanted to highlight the, the order in which we presented the value engineering is the order of priority. So, you know, there, there was a purpose in how that was presented. Obviously, we know using the facial, the instructional space is, is the first priority. As, as Jason talked about, some of the structural supports in the auditorium and why it becomes so difficult to renovate with value engineering in those spaces, it was how do we then eat the auditorium visual and audio? So those are priorities. I don't want you to think that somehow we're trying to fit this all back into that, that smaller number.
Thank you. So if I go back to just the portion of the music room, AV area, and so on, if my math is correct, this is about 1.28, which is within.
It's basically what you have left, right? If you proceeded with the gym and the steam additions, it's basically what you have left.
Everything else. Now, I asked that question, but I also, all the other, is there anything interconnected here in such a way that has to be done? Or are those other, has the first priority and everything else you push aside? For the most, yeah, engineering, you know, construction perspective, I'd say.
So, yeah, the way the project lays out, you could do the gym and the steam additions, the, you know, eight, let's say eight million dollars right there. And then the instructional spaces for the vocal and music, and then the, you know, the lighting upgrades and the sound upgrades. Those are all, can be completed without the requirement of the rest. And we did leave a little bit of, so I will say, if we go back to the rigging.
Sorry? I've got 1.24 in the music room. 381 day, I can't walk 80. I don't know about the aisle lighting, that was a thousand dollars or something.
Yeah, there's.
And back of stage was another 132. Well, that's about 1.75.
Exactly. So we believe that all, yes, Ted can, I believe, back me up. You might throw me out of the bus. But the, you know, those are all separate areas and can be completed in and of themselves.
And as part of the whole conversation piece, what's not to undo? If you come back, whatever, five years from now and do something, it's not undo what you just did five years ago.
Right.
And, and not waste money. Is if you do something here, what's been proposed, you don't have to undo it. It stays intact. And the lighting and, as Jason said, the lighting and sound can be picked up and moved. The renovation that brings back to that place. And it's a locking, instead of, it's a locking cap as well, so it's secure. When you close it in a performance, you can lock it, walk away in a second. And there's not that, as you said before, it's pretty huge. It's like connecting and reconnecting and disconnected cables that over time wears those connections. And then you start to get that cradling and deterioration in the audio.
And then I will say, you know, we will have, you know, we'll have roughly, I think we've allocated eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in contingency. If all those funds aren't utilized, a lot of those miscellaneous scopes of work, the dust collectors, the elevator modernization, those can be proceeded with again without really impacting any of them, any of the other scopes of work, even the fitness spaces. So you could go back to your priority list. When you see what you have left remaining, obviously, I can't, I don't have crystal ball. I can tell you that you have eight hundred thousand dollars remaining, and there won't be any change orders on the entire job. But you could always go back to the priority and say, okay, now it's already designed. We have the scopes of work, let's proceed, let's get this done. Or like we've seen many places, you have a new priority at that juncture, right? Something else that is either broken or needs to be changed immediately, and that's what you use those funds for. So just to, if I can get, this might take a while. So we wanted to lay out, you know, a schedule in regards to, we still believe we're in good standing if this schedule can be proceeded with in, in getting the gym and the steam and gym renovations back out to bid. Obviously, that's all dependent upon how we all proceed to move forward. But prepare a bid package, modify some of the documents over the next two and a half weeks. Put it, put the project back out to bid April 11th through May 4th. And then we would award contracts within a meeting between May 10th and May 16th. And then construction would still be scheduled to commence July 1st. And majority of that is abatement of the gym flooring and demolition of the existing gymnasium. And then depending on how we proceed forward, it would be to look at the rest of the project, identify, modify the documents to be only those scopes of work that you want to proceed with and, and put that thing back out to bid in a little bit better of a competitive environment later in the summer into the fall. Still have it, still identify those scopes of work to be completed all within the larger capital project schedule with final cost reports. Any questions?
So that's the previous page. Assuming construction starts July 4th, what kind of completion schedule? I mean, I, I know it's kind of an early question. Would it be completed, how much would we have to?
So we pushed the completion date based upon, you know, losing some amount of time. We've pushed that completion date out into, I believe this was always going slightly into the school year, the gymnasium. So now it's pushed even slightly further into January for completion and moving.
But we think we could still hit that December final cost report milestone in 23.
You're, you're saying January, February 3?
24, 24. We might have some punchless work to do in 24, that, that January. We have, we had the contracts done finalized, so that cost report could be completed.
And obviously, we'll push as much as we can to get those things, to get it completed at an earlier date. But at this juncture, can't say that for sure.
So tonight, you're not taking any formal action against the board resolution for the capital improvement project. While you would be authorized in the project team to just to report with the bidding process of the steam engineering.
I'll reverse it. Now, you said you're part of a chair. You're happy with regards to just the meanings and instructional space recommendations for the most part? What meaning, meaning demands that the students need? You say that will help those spaces in each of the areas.
For now, it will help those spaces. Bringing up a floor, definitely will help the spaces. The storage is a little concerning, depending on what they said we were going to have available. Another concern is the lift will be taken out. And if, you know, we don't do a, come for a lift renovation, everything's going to have to get down the floor. So those are just things I was kind of thinking of as we're going. But, um, yeah, within this, whether the money that we have available, those would be the things that I would say would be our priority.
And the lift that Maggie's referring to was to get the larger instruments from the stage back up to the band instrumental room. That's a difficult job.
You know, like, it's currently the freight elevator, so we can't send kids in there to do that. So we send everything down and then run down the stairs. And we have to go through the tunnel and up, and some of our equipment doesn't fit through there. That's, you know, going to be a concern regardless of, because you're not fixing that.
How much was that lift?
That was the freight elevator modernization was 165,000.
There, there was a different lift.
But I don't believe that.
That's not.
That doesn't address.
I'm thinking, yeah, that doesn't address that.
So to, to break the, the other lift out, we, it, like I said, required a lot of structural modification, a change. It removed the stairs from the instrumental music, and it brought it straight out and directly down behind the stage. So it's to incorporate that is really a redesign, rethought process around the entire space.
Like you, I think you said there was like a hundred thousand dollars that could be earmarked for some storage shared through drama and whatnot. When you originally had the different levels, we were thinking of doing all the marching band equipment and things up in the not used, accessible every day. So that's all things we'll have to reconsider within the last month. We've gone from having the giant, you're going to have all this, to we're getting our floors filled in and our lockers from the other side. So those definitely are priorities that will help.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted to make sure we identified some dollars, you know, a hundred thousand to figure out a storage, a better storage solution for everybody and then in the exist, in the existing space that you have that there.
And you're filling, you want to fill in the coral room too?
She wants that in, yes. Yeah, because right now with the way the arches are front to back, you can't get, you can get another row in if it's all flat instead of just one set of chairs per row, so she could get more students in there as well.
Right, just a word caution in regards to the coral room is that the wonderful problem we have is we have very large middle school high school courses. So she has over a hundred students. The overall room capacity, and that's based on square footage, is 77 students. So even if we do take out those tiers and the additional space, we're still limited to 77 students in that space.
I don't know if we found out the band number. We were going to look into that with the equipment. I did not, I don't know if that ever got it done, but. I'll tell you.
Charlie's going to tell you. Charlie will tell you tomorrow.
I mean, I'm just thinking of like our storage. We definitely have the storage as a consideration. Right now, going down to the elementary on the right hand side in the coal, we call it, is there our elementary students that store their things? So that's got to be addressed every day. I tidy it up as I go on trips, so.
You have a successful program.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Just take a walk through the, remember the Biden's meeting earlier tonight? A walk through the general ed, special ed, the budgets for the upcoming school year. Just looking here at general ed real quick. Our, oops, have a good night, guys. Our certified salaries are going to come down just a smidgen as really the result of some high cost salaries. I'm sitting in the organization last year, being replaced by some warmer cost salaries. So we have some breakage there. The classified salaries, just the elementary where primarily where key trades are budgeted, and the rest of everything kind of stays pretty, pretty constant right there. The general budget for next year. Just word caution, you know, there is no BOSI's numbers down here. We're still waiting on those numbers yet to come in, so we have not. Occupational ed here, again, our certified salaries coming down a little bit. You recall last year during the budget process, we budgeted a bigger number there, trying to find somebody to come and replace Mr. Ellis. We, the person we hired was in a lower salary there, so we just have a little bit of savings there. Excuse me. A little bit of savings here in the classifieds, classified salaries. That is, we had Iain in Dortmund, her retired, she retired, and her apprentice was a lower salary. So we are seeing some savings there. And everything else is pretty consistent there in this portion of the budget as well. Pupil services, I don't want anybody to follow their chair this number here, going from 515 to 649. That's preliminary, just the way we build the budget. That includes all of our personnel, people, employees. We know there's one person there that's going to be pulled out to be paid off a grant. We also have an additional cost in there of a psychology intern. We estimate that it's about 25,000. Follow up on that here, just a slide or two. Getting to our special education, as you may or may not know, Monroe 1 and Monroe 2 BOSI's are not accepting new students from non-compbonant districts next year. So any of our kids that are currently attending Monroe 1 and Monroe replacements continue to go, but we can't send new students up there. We are also having some issues with some of our private placements. Mary Carrio went for five days, so four days this year. Just, it's really a sign of the overall labor market, really what we're seeing. Some public schools are putting our, our students on waitlist as, as our BOSI. So again, it's just this idea that the labor market, particularly. So again, it's just this idea that the labor market, particularly in this case in the special ed area, is, it's a tough labor market. And so the vendors that we typically go to, the section typically go to, they don't have the help to take on more students. So it's creating a little bit of an issue for us. In addition to that, this year, you can see we've had an increased number of referrals to our community on preschool, special education. Four of our kiddos coming into kindergarten are currently in a special class. And then you'll see next year, we got five children that are three, one and four, and then next year, so that's coming September, a year from now. Five of those children are in an eight-one-three class. So this isn't a one-time lift, this is going to be with us for a little while. So working with Stephanie Miller and Cindy over the course of the last several months. The idea was to create an eight-point-one classroom in the elementary, in the elementary school. That would, that would cause a one-point-one increase in special education teachers. We reassign a teaching assistant, we're going to have to increase in related services. Purchase a related service that we don't currently have. Increase the speech and language therapist from point five to one-point-O. So it's, and there's the psychology intern, the top of the most likely, so. The idea here is by keeping the kids in district, they're not spending an hour going to Rochester and back. They can get into general education programming when that's appropriate. And so we just came to the conclusion that given all of the circumstances, this was the best solution for us. And again, it's, this isn't going away anywhere anytime soon, so we're think that this is going to be a progressively, progressively building program, like I said, I would say. We don't currently have placements for four of our incoming high needs students. And, you know, we don't like to talk about the dollars and cents of education, but sometimes it's necessary. And this does look to save us about a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So from a dollars and cents standpoint, from an educational standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint, it all makes sense. So that's kind of the direction that we're, we're looking to go in. And so with that, you'll see that our proposed special education budget is going up here about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're adding a salary there, half a salary, taking on some of those contractual obligations for related services and such. But you'll see, like, our, our high cost elementary goes from one fifty-five down to zero, I look, we're paying now, so. Unfortunately, Mrs. Miller could deliver this for you a whole lot better than I can, but she has to be home this evening. But we, I did hear, just so you could see that we did try to guesstimate as best we could based on last year's rates and throwing a little bit of an increase at them, what we could project our BOSI's costs to look like here. But it's, it's a, it's more than, it's better than a shot at dark, but it's not precise. That's, that's where we're, we're looking to move at from here to here in the future. Posting all of that kind of stuff.
Just, just a concern, this is Cindy's deal and Stephanie's deal. Bringing kids back, saving money is great if it's the appropriate placement, so that's. I just have a concern on that, that's your department and Stephanie's department?
Yeah, absolutely, you know, one of the things that, that Stephanie and Tracy found that worked hard on this year was, we, as many of our students who used to be in self-creating classrooms into the general classrooms and that is going very well. So it's not just bringing back, so those, those preschool students that are transitioning to kindergarten, they don't have a placement. So they would be home trying to receive tutoring and related services if we didn't build this program. Because GB BOSI's hasn't had the ability to or capacity to build this program. They are currently working with Dancel Central School District to utilize part of their middle school that is no longer being utilized because there's decreasing enrollment. So they're trying to build those classrooms. They were just getting ready to open a classroom for an elementary waiting list and they had another teacher resign. So now the teacher that they hired is going into that preservation. So it's, it, you know, certainly when we look at students who have, you know, a multitude of, of needs. We want to make sure that we are meeting their needs within the district and make sure that we can support them. But also we have to be cognizant of the fact that there are, the, the number of places available to us are decreasing drastically.
So you see, so it's largely by incoming, can be very.
So we do have students who are placed in another public school district that we would bring back to our program. So they're not in a BOSI's program, they're not at Mary Carriola, they are currently in another public school district within our region.
Questions?
So yes, as Regina mentioned, I saw her in the hallway this morning and I said, let's take all the positive things. I said, you know, I struggle on my report because I want to brag about what's happening with students. And then she said, we had the twentieth annual bottom spelling bee last weekend, Friday and Saturday. And if you had a chance to go, I'm sure, much like myself, you thoroughly enjoyed it. It was a laugh-out-loud production. I went Friday night, but I heard Saturday night was just as humorous, but really want to commend Lindsay. This was her first production, certainly Patina helped support it, but Lindsay did an amazing job. You know, much to some of our struggles with the stage, you know, some Maggie in the back directing, directing the band. So just want to thank everyone because in a time when we need to laugh, this was it. That show delivered, it delivered really well. So congratulations to the entire cast and crew. Also, we had Odyssey of the Mind, not last weekend, but the prior weekend. And it's just typical of our groups, they did very, very well. So we had two teams who placed first, vehicle one in our performance three. We had our performance one team in second place. And, and in third place was our performance one team to the Renato Fusto, which is the award for creativity, was awarded to our vehicle two team. So very excited about those results and how well our teams did. And they are off to states this weekend, so we wish them well. It is in Syracuse, they are, they are getting up early and they are heading to Syracuse Thursday in the morning and they will perform and coming back. So I'm sure they'll all be very tired Saturday night, but we certainly want to wish them well. So we've been talking about advocacy last board meeting, I talked about that the push for electric buses was by twenty thirty-five. Every bus in New York State with an electric school bus, that really does seem to be moving in the direction that, that is going to be accepted and approved. So really just trying to talk to the legislators about what that means for our schools. As I said last time, increased costs, pretty significant. The difference between a gas or diesel bus and electric bus is substantial as well as all the infrastructure needs that we need to change for our bus crash. So we're continuing to advocate for either a more practical timeline or a little bit more realistic proposal there. The other piece that we are advocating for is the last two years, we have been given a federal waiver for all lunches to be free to all of our students. And so we recently are sending a letter to Congress to continue to ask for that. It is not currently in, in the Congress and is, is, is voted down, so we're hoping that they will revisit that. Regents exams, they're happening in June twenty-two. And the reason I put the schedule up there is because this year on Monday, June twentieth, we will be observing Juneteenth. So that just causes, you know, a little bit difference in regards to our scheduling because we've always had regents on that Monday. But obviously with that being a day off and a, and a holiday, we will not be having school. But just wanted to show that that is a different day for us. And then that Friday is a rating day, so June twenty-fourth is a rating day. And then we sold my family with a field of dreams and showed the same picture that I had, must be Erin's shared gold pictures. But the field of dreams work has begun and they are working very quickly. In this picture, the dugouts are still there, the dugouts are gone, the light, the field goalposts have been removed and they're, they're moving quite quickly. So hopefully our good weather continues and we see progress. And hopefully we'll have that completed for our competitions and our physical education classes in the fall. And later on today, tonight, you will be accepting Mrs. Sotora's resignation for the purpose of retirement. And just really wanted to take a moment and, and thank Kelly for all that she has done for our school. She has been here for fourteen years. She has absolutely done wonders for the instructional component of that school. But absolutely more in environment and everything that she does. If you're not on Twitter, Twitter, you should be because you'll know exactly what's happening in the elementary school every day, all day long. So Kelly started here as our director of learning and then four years ago transitioned to the elementary school. We should receive, will receive tenure as of July first. So just really want to congratulate Kelly. We do have the process posted to replace Kelly, which we have, so you know our very large shoes to fill. And after the board meeting, accepting her resignation for the purpose of retirement, I will send an email to the elementary staff to let them know of the processes and how we move forward. I'm sure many people are worried about next step and how we're going to, how we're going to build up shoes. So congratulations to Kelly. Any questions?
I think one term, one kind of talk about finance relative to the electric buses. I'm not weighing in a greater role. Justin, it's our understanding at this point, I start from wrong with that. In twenty thirty-five, it's not all new buses, it's the entire, every bus.
Right.
Every school bus.
Correct, starting in twenty twenty-nine, all new buses that are purchased must be electric. That was at the last board meeting, they had that date at twenty twenty-seven, they moved into twenty twenty-nine. So in twenty twenty-nine, all new buses are electric there, yeah, for.
So we'll move to community relations, is anybody signed up to speak? Okay. And we'll go right to community reports.
So come in. Auto finance met tonight, you mentioned, pretty much talked about it, depending on Cindy relative to the budget and the buses. Discussion is really the topics for finance, you've heard it all already.
Questions for Mike of the committee on finance? Okay. Allison, we met tonight and we met via Zoom with Catherine Peterson. She works for everyone BOSI's. And she's our representative on the project to bring our policy book up to date. Policies we need, unload the policies we don't need anymore. You know, we thought, we'd met several times and we, we kind of thought we're, we're just treading water a little bit. But Ms. Peterson said that we're doing very well, so that, that made us all feel great. So that, that process is moving right along. We've, we've done a lot already with the required policies and we'll get into the others too. She seems very willing to help us. Kudos to Sherry for putting it all together and getting it on Board docs, but then we've got to move it to something else and she gets all that stuff. And we're very appreciative of that. So, so that, that work is moving along and we're very pleased with that. Kind of boring stuff, but it's got to be done. What did I miss?
And just as we move forward with approving our new board policies, they are in Board docs, very easily able to be searched. So we're really trying to help the community also if they had a question about how we, how we do business here for our policies, you can very easily search on Board doc. So as we approve those new policies, they are being placed there in a much user-friendly fashion.
Right, and, oh, one other thing that Ms. Peterson mentioned, you know how we do, we introduce the policy and then there's the first reading and the second reading and then we approve. And she said that's not really necessary. You can do it that way if you want, but if you've got a, you know, a policy that just makes total sense, you're cleaning something up, you can introduce it and approve it the same time. So we'll take advantage of that when it's appropriate. Last thing, speaking of policy, we have a proposed new policy for streeting tonight. Regarding rules governing construction and change orders. And the way it is now, we begin into a project and we've got a ten thousand dollar change order, it's got to go to the board. So in order to make life a little easier, we're proposing to change that to thirty-five thousand. Now, the way it's going to work, remember we had a conversation, that policy that we changed, I think the example of Janie did a school bus driver, the driver was already to go. But we had to call a special board meeting to approve the driver. And we changed that policy to give Cindy the authority to, to grant that, to request, and then we follow up with the approval at the next meeting. This would work similarly. Cindy would give the okay for up to thirty-five thousand dollar change orders, subject to our approval at the next meeting. It would work about the same way. So we'll introduce that tonight for the first read. And maybe that's better. Questions? Great, thank you. G C E F, can we talk about the last time?
So, yeah.
Was that between our?
No, we did talk about it last time and they're, they're working on a project that I, I think at this point they still want to keep quiet until they actually fulfill what, what they're trying to do. But they are working on an appreciation project, so we'll, we'll leave it there.
Yeah.
We know them, they'll do it well.
Will be done well. So, great, so let's go right to personnel.
Under personnel, like, can they send motion for items eight point zero two to eight point zero, including requirements for the nation's appointments?
Sorry. Comments, questions, and any of those?
I think it's ironic that the night we talk about our Odyssey of the Mind teams going off to states that were accepting Bobby Stein Howard's resignation. There was someone that dedicated much, much time and effort to really bringing that, I mean, it was already a great program. But the work that Bobby did with it was, was amazing, the size of the teams that grew. And I know that once we're pulling back and hopefully COVID is far behind us, those teams will grow again. But the work that Bobby did with not only Odyssey of the Mind, but also with the children that she worked with throughout her time here has been amazing. And so we really miss Bobby, but want to wish her well and her effort.
Indeed, indeed. She put their program on the map. And I just like a follow-up of something Cindy said in reference to Kelly leaving. I, I personally will really miss her. Her, her good cheer, her smile, she worked tirelessly. She did a wonderful job first in our curriculum area and then the elementary school. And as I say, I really miss her smile, she's always positive and upbeat and happy to see you. And we will miss her and we'll have to work hard to replace her, so. Twitter won't be the same, so kudos to Mrs. Sotora and good for her. Any other questions or comments, any of those? Not all in favor? Anyone opposed? Yes, thank you.
For new business, can they consent motion for items nine point zero two? For new business, consent motion for items nine point zero two through nine point one zero.
Questions, comments on any of those items?
Nine point one zero. Let's move to the district considering the acquisition of public student transportation vehicles. Stay tuned by three. Should that be the, should be the acquisition of three replacement student vehicles.
Do you mean nine point one zero?
Nine point one zero, yes.
Oh, one zero.
It's the resolution, it's just a typo, it's just the whereas.
It's just a typo?
Yeah. It's right after the whereas, the district is considering the acquisition of.
Oh, I, I want that to be. Oh, yeah. Jay, Jay wouldn't like twelve.
Well, if you could get twelve for 417,000, we should do that.
Ease in.
Yep.
That might be three, that might be three rental vehicles and nine toys.
Easily fixed. Thanks for a good catch, good catch. Anything else? Yes. You good? All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? That's unanimous, thank you.
Business, the business office. Consent motion for items ten point zero two through ten point zero five.
Sorry. Questions or comments on any of those items? Well, you ready? Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone oppose, thank you. Any issues? Special board meeting on April twenty-fifth to, it's a five-minute meeting to approve the, uh, BOSI's budget and the BOSI's board members. When we, when we get closer, we're thinking like a five o'clock meeting maybe? Put it in the back here, I'll, I'll reach out to everybody as we get closer, we only need four people. And as I say, five to 10 minutes, but, uh, let's schedule that and, uh, as we get closer, I'll reach out. See if four of you will be kind enough to, uh, to drop in. Great. And, uh. Yes, Susan? One particular personnel item and potential litigation.
And we're going to enter into executive session for personnel and.
Sorry, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Thank you, everyone.